I'd like to call the City of Ione Special Meeting of Wednesday, October 30th at 6:30 to order. Janice, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Atlin.
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Here.
Here.
Mayor Ratton.
Here.
And Mayor.
Here. Stand for Pledge Beligence.
The Pledge Beligence to the Republic of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to open it up for public comment for any item that is not listed on the agenda.
Elmer Roddy, 621 Pleasant Valley Drive. I know I'm beating a dead horse here, but what the heck is going on? Couple meetings ago, we announced, you announced to everybody that we had a 3.2 million offer that was made. We've not heard anything back.
Yeah.
Rejected.
This is on the agenda.
No, it's not a closed session.
Yes, but we'll open it up for public comment before we go into closed session.
Wait.
Okay, we'll be ready for you. Is there anyone on Zoom?
By the way, Andy is on Zoom.
Okay. Okay, we'll close public comment. First item is, on the regular agenda, is the approval purchase of the flow meter for the wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Councilmembers, you have your staff report in front of you at the last water, Regional Water Board meeting. It was brought to everyone's attention that the tertiary influent flow meter was broken. It was determined that the meter could not be repaired before, therefore, Waterstone obtained an estimate which is attached. The purchase of the meter is imperative as this tracer study cannot commence until the meter is working properly. Several of the regional board members stress the importance of fast-tracking the tracer study as it is supposedly already years behind. Justin is here to explain further the need and how much it would cost in the process of getting the flow meter. So, Justin, if you could give a little bit more information to the council, please?
Absolutely. Hello, everybody. I have a breakdown for you guys. Do you guys mind if I hand it to you?
I think we.
I don't need it.
I think they already got it.
I think we got it.
The invoice with all the breakdown on it?
Did we?
Oh, and not the invoice, just the specs.
Nice.
We don't have to get bits on this.
Go on, more. You want one, George? Yeah, so the flow meter went down weeks ago now. And yeah, it's irreparable. That thing, we got 15 years out of it, which is great considering that it was a cheaper brand. But the way it sits is in direct sunlight, so it was just a matter of time. Just so happens that everything's going on my first summer here, but we're chugging along. We're at the tail end of the tertiary plant, but as George said, this is critical to being able to perform the tracer study. And reason being, when you do a tracer study, you have to fluctuate the flows to be able to figure out, you know, the dosing demands as far as our chlorine goes for that plant. And so if I have no control in the room, there's no way I can bring it from 200 gallons per minute to, say, 500 gallons per minute. It just can't happen. So, in order to knock this tracer study out, which is required, you know, for us right now, we have to have this done. On there's the breakdown. What we're gonna do is get into the pipe, put a new mag meter in the pipe. We gotta remove it. You know, and as it says, we gotta dig it out. The box itself, it gives us our readings. That has to be replaced. That's the one that I said sits in direct sunlight. And then also, we have to run a new line, underground wiring, because the line going from the box itself to our office communicating to our SCADA system has gone down as well. I think that's mainly what caused it there. Because what we're dealing with is, I guess, geese. I drove up to P G N E one day. I said, why do we keep having these power outages? You know, like, we can't do this to a wastewater treatment plant. He said, you have a lot of geese applying to your power lines out here. We're trying to revamp these power lines and get it, you know, strengthen them to where this won't be an issue, but this is what you always deal with out here. I had about six power outages this summer from the month of late June. Oh, gosh, I had my last one back in September, and it just knocks everything offline. Can you imagine, you know, flipping a computer off and on? You know, unplugging it off and on. I mean, Chief Alfred, you know, computers, you're not supposed to do that. So everything's kind of gone down on me. And with that being said, I'll segue into the wastewater treatment plant, if you guys don't mind. Those ones are also off. Our main influent coming in from the city, that's year-round. You know, tertiary shuts off in weeks or so. All the influent water from the city, that one's off. I mean, it's reading a million gallons a day, and we were probably only taking 500,000 gallons. So that's a big issue. And also, our spray fields, our town fields, that one went down too. And every technical expert that comes out and looks at, you know, what I'm dealing with, they say you got a bunch of temporary, you know, lifespan of two to five-year stuff in here. So I think it's all reached its, it's, well, it has. The flow meter on the spray field itself is completely off. And the farmers at this point are just guestimating how much they're using. They want our influent. I mean, we're just, we're just recording what it is. You know, we have our license on the walls there, so this is, I'm just throwing this out there right now that this needs to get fixed too. It's a big deal. We have to track every drip of water that comes through that plant. One other, go ahead.
More information will be presented at the next wastewater meeting in terms of.
This is another topic.
This is another topic, yeah.
It's kind of flowing into.
Stay to what we have right here.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely. I just need to throw this out there today to just make sure that you guys are aware of this, because I don't want somebody coming back and saying, why didn't you say?
We're here just for this right now. We have to stay to what's on the agenda.
Absolutely. I agree with you, but this is my license on the line there, so I really need you guys to know how serious this is over there. And just to throw it out there, because I cannot get my license revoked for having false numbers at a plant, so.
Well, then, all of that information should be going to George and coming to us. You don't have to wait until.
Yeah.
We have a meeting.
Okay. So circling back to this, is there any questions for this right here?
I, I, I would like to see an invoice that has some actual prices on it. We just have one big price at the bottom.
Right. Okay, so you want?
Well, I mean, it looks like it doesn't, it's not one big purchase. It looks like there's several purchases.
No one here is gonna understand what a mega flow meter or a flanged connector kit is. I think it's fine. This should have been done a month ago. This should have been done a month ago.
We haven't.
We should have had a violation because of this. In the real world, you have 24 hours to fix this. I don't know why Regional didn't come after us. This is stupid. They should have been taken care of inside.
Okay.
So we're, you know, we've, we've thrown it out there. It's been around. I'm just, I'm just, I'm trying to defend myself with what council members said.
To defend yourself, okay? He spoke out.
Okay.
You know, we have clarifying, we can ask you clarifying questions. We can't point the finger at you then. So.
Okay.
Dominic, do you have any clarifying questions concerning? Okay.
No.
Mayor Ratton?
No.
My only concern is I usually, you know, I don't know if we have to follow our bidding process in this circumstance. Because of the threshold, and meaning by bidding process, we get three bids, three competitive bids.
Yeah.
I don't know what this, their contract allows them to do. That's one of my questions. Well, that's really my question is that, have we gotten the most competitive price? When I see an invoice that just has Waterstone at the top and 48,000 at the bottom, you know, I'd like to know, is there a markup?
So, I agree with everything you're saying, Mayor. My job tonight was to come here and let you guys know what's going wrong there. The state knows, and I just need to leave it at that, so whatever.
Did you put this invoice together?
Waterstone put this invoice together. I, I sourced out everything. I spent the days following that it went down, finding the mag meter, finding the underground plumbing, finding our new box that's gonna read out for us. And I got it all put together. If you want that breakdown, I can absolutely, totally do that. Just time. It's all about time.
I understand that. But at the same time.
No, I hear you. Yeah.
We're spending taxpayer dollars, and I do like to see that some attempt was made to follow our bidding process. But again, I don't know if your contract allows you to make purchases without following the bidding.
So I would just jump back to the last CIP project we did where one of our bidders came at 250,000, and we came in at 170-something thousand. And we were able to do that project. I don't know what the, is it the same protocol for this?
So.
Yeah. This is, yeah, again.
$48,000 purchase.
Emergency, though. So slap emergency on purchase, yeah.
Understand that. I called the meeting because that was an emergency.
Absolutely.
You know, that's my concern, but.
No, yeah, I mean, like I said, I've.
It's, I'm, it's, I'm just talking to council here, okay? Councilman Mitchell?
Well, I understand your concerns and certainly applaud you for bringing those out. I also understand the emergency situation and moving on and think this is the way to go personally, so I don't have any, I don't have any questions.
I vote to do it.
Well, we haven't taken a vote yet. But that's why we're here, to get it moving along. In the future, I would like to see a breakdown of costs.
Okay. Yeah.
So.
That's not a problem.
And so you can get this, put your timeframe on getting this installed.
So with expedite shipping, which we requested from all the vendors we're buying the parts from?
Is that included in here?
Yes, it is. Yeah. Well, you'll get no more, you'll get any further costs from what we're quoting. But with expedite shipping, it's four weeks. So in four weeks it arrives, then I gotta make plans, track it, you know, and the second it gets there, I gotta be ready to shut water off. I gotta communicate with all of our partners, shutting water down, pulling pipes out of the ground, running, running wire. It's gonna be a lot. So we're looking at a five-week project. Our five weeks out from, I wouldn't even say completion then. So we're supposed to do this tracer study in three weeks. It's, this is, it's a lot. It's because I got, fortunately, I got pushed back, so it's just up to you guys, if you guys wanna do this.
Well, it doesn't, seems like we're.
Well, the alternative is to not do the tracer study for another year, and that's unacceptable for Regional, so we really need to move this forward.
And hopefully, if we do this and we cannot get the tracer study done, which maybe, right, at least they see we had made an attempt.
Right. Regional, Regional did say they'd work with us if we need to do it in the wet season.
Yeah.
So we should be barring, you know, 100-year flood rain coming for the next six weeks.
Trying to prepare myself.
Hopefully, we will be able to get this tracer study done.
Yeah.
And Regional is aware of all of this. They're aware of where we're at. They know this is down. They've known it was down since the day it went down.
Right.
And they, they're, they're pushing to get this tracer study done and pushing to get this done, so.
Yeah.
How many years is, I think it's, what, five or six years behind?
Yeah, this one, the tracer study, it's a year now.
A year.
So can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the flow meter for the wastewater treatment plant. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Oh, you didn't do come to comment.
I'd like to say one thing. You're talking about the $48,000. I can remember when Perk was here and the aerators, they never got three bids, and there's two people sitting on there says they didn't need it. I just wanted people to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Close public comment? Oh, hang on. Gentlemen, can anybody on Zoom? Close public comment. We had a motion and an approval. Our next item is closed session, conference with real property negotiators. We will open that up to public comment before we go into closed session.
Okay, I won't repeat everything. What I'd like to know is, CNU told us about the bid, the offer that went out. Would you mind telling us whether there was a rejection, a, a bottle to it where they tried to get on a different amount? Or what's, what's happening with it? That's all we wanna know. I mean, everybody in this city is running around with different theories of what the heck is going on. And you are the council. You are the people that are working for us. You gotta tell us what's going on on this thing. I know we've got, what, five weeks before the, quote, shutdown that Trune is telling everybody about? Let us know what the heck is going on. You gotta shut this down somehow, because the rumors are just absolutely horrendous.
Thank you, Homer. When we go into closed session, I'm sure we'll discuss amongst ourselves and with the attorney how much we can come out and disclose then. I probably need to check with him first before I say any. But that's one of the reasons that we continue to have these meetings is so that we can stay up to date and on top of it. So I know it's frustrating that we don't give you a lot of information. But hopefully, we will. Okay, we will close public comment and adjourn to closed session.
Good.
Good, John. I'd like to call the City of Ione Special Meeting of Wednesday, October 30th, 2024 back to order. Do we need to do a roll call?
No.
Can I come back?
No.
Okay. Closed session items we can report out. The LOI that the city discussed at the prior meeting has been signed by the Hawn Foundation. We are in the process of communication and negotiate in the negotiation process with the Hawn family while simultaneously looking for a third-party purchaser. There are several options that we can pursue. And that's all we have to say.
A little bit more.
We'll can, I know. Well, you know, my hearing is on. And we'll just continue to stay on top of it. We need to call special meetings. We'll, we'll do that and try to keep you guys as informed as we can.
Just a couple of house cleaning, cleaning items is, is would you folks still like to have a council meeting on November 5th?
I thought we, we canceled.
Cancel it, okay, just wanted to confirm.
Yeah.
And also, since we did cancel it, is it possible to sign or send out the warrants of utilities and necessary bills of that sort? Because we'd have to wait another, another meeting just for the utilities.
I had them here.
Excuse me?
I can go ahead.
Yes, Andrew, please.
Okay, um, hang on a minute. So we're done with closed session.
Oh, that's great.
Now, uh, we reported out. We don't have it on here, but we'll go to council comment, the city manager comment, so go ahead, George.
Okay, so the other item is, 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 uh, would you have objections to sign warrants or prove warrants into the?
Do we need to have that on the agenda?
Utilities.
We needed to have that on the agenda.
Right, it's not on the agenda, so we have them here, but you cannot sign them. But he's asking is if we can sign emergent, the ones that have to be sent out. We have like the police station, if it's not received by the second, it has a $300 late fee. We have ACES who's due by the 27th, so since we go every two weeks if it's not on the.
I understand, why didn't we get it on here?
Huh?
Why didn't we get it on here?
We didn't have it on here.
Well, because we didn't know there was a special meeting, she did the things today.
Oh.
Kirsten did, the AP did it, so you created them today.
I called for this two days ago.
Yes, and she wasn't here on Tuesday, she generated them today, so.
How, how much is the? Can we make a motion for that?
I don't even know, is Andy here?
Well, I would, my thought was the city manager has authority up to 15,000, so I would think if there's anything under 15,000, it doesn't need council approval, but we wanted to keep you in the loop if that's what we have to do to get the ones that have to. The others can wait, it's just the ones that have to get done before the 19th, I think is your next meeting.
Well, anything that's within the city manager's purview, I think we, he has, we don't.
Okay.
He can do, that's within the city manager's purview.
Send checks, so. I don't like to send checks, so.
Well, at least have the one you guys approved tonight assigned.
Okay.
Good enough.
Thank you very much, Council.
My congratulations are adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, sir.
Well, I don't have a ride, so I have to wait.
You gotta go with me.